From March 13th, 2018. Mrs. McLeod will be late, but she says she will try to make it for the formal meeting at 6:00. She's out of town for a work-related issue. We will have a closed session this evening relating to a report from the Internal Auditor Committee. And if we don't have time before the formal meeting, we hope we do. If we don't, though, we will have it after the formal meeting in Room 113. If we have time before the formal meeting, we'll go ahead and have it in here. I'd like to remind those of us that signed up for the VSBA Tidewater Spring Regional Forum that it's next Monday, the 19th, and it will be held at Woodrow Wilson High School in Portsmouth. And the meeting starts at 5:00. And for those of us that are going, we might want to talk about carpooling. I think Mrs. Malmick has volunteered to drive. If we would like to get together, we can get together and ride together. Would anyone else like to give us an update on any school-related events?
I'm handing out...
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Briggs, and then Ms. Ryan.
I just handed out the invitations to you guys for the Sisters City Breakfast.
Okay, and it's on what date?
It's on the 19th of April.
Okay, thank you. There's an RSVP on those, so, all right. Ms. Ryan, and then Mr. Edwards.
Okay, in the last month, there were a few events that offered teachers the chance to be aware of options for their classes. And it was great to see that our teachers are taking advantage of some of these things. One was at the Chrysler Museum, and it was an opportunity for all the areas, museums, and other cultural arts organizations to showcase their offerings. And it was great to learn that we do have so many teachers taking advantage of these, either field trips to the organizations or the organizations coming to the schools. And a similar example was at the Brock Center. And on a Saturday morning, Mrs. Briggs was with me, and there were about 30 or 40 teachers who showed up on a Saturday morning, a full morning of, again, information on how the center can enhance their children's curriculum.
Great, can I add something to that?
Sure.
It was an amazing experience, and it would be well worth our while to let everyone check it out.
Okay, all right, Mr. Edwards, and then Ms. Williams.
This past Saturday morning, the Partnership Expo at Old Dominion School was resounding success. The only challenge was the fact that it was so successful that Parkland was a... Throughout the Bayside area, it was at a premium. But really a great opportunity to showcase the incredible partnerships. Some of our partners have many, many multiple schools that they partner with, and others, you know... Just really nice, and Mrs. Williams was there. There may have been others, but she and I...
I was there.
Okay, you know, really, really great. And I guess it was the inaugural, and I'm sure there'll be more based on Saturday.
Ms. Williams?
I was just gonna comment on that, the Partners Expo. I was just gonna drop by, because I had somewhere else to be, but I ended up staying the whole two hours. And I just had a great time visiting with folks and seeing what everybody's doing and running into a lot of teachers that were there, too.
So tell them what you did today.
It was a great time. And then today, I got to brag on VBCPAS and Dr. Tatwell and our opioid curriculum. I went and presented to every guidance counselor in middle and high school in the Chesapeake college school system.
Cool.
Yes.
Cool, any others? Okay. So moving right along, we're ready to go into our five-year special education plan.
Thank you. So this is, you know, the board has already seen the plan, and this is an update on some of what's been happening with the plan, but also some new additions to the plan, and includes some outcomes and measurables. And so you're gonna learn more about that tonight, and Dr. Gatling is here to take us through it.
All right, good evening. Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Belika Gatling, Executive Director for the Programs for Exceptional Children. As you recall, in June of last year, we presented the five-year plan for the education of students with disabilities. The purpose of today's presentation is to provide you with an update on the identified outcome measures and the progress over the last nine months as a result of collaboration with the departments and offices identified in our five-year plan. As a reminder, the five-year plan is broken down into six goal areas, and the strategic actions within each of the goals are detailed within the five-year plan. Before I highlight the progress of the plan, I would like to address the determined outcome measures that were determined for the five-year plan. The last time we met, I indicated that each goal within the five-year plan would be aligned to a determined outcome measure. At that time, we were in the process of completing that work. Now that that alignment has been completed, I would like to share that the outcome measures for each goal in the five-year plan have been added. The measures on this slide represent the majority of measures that were used in each of the goals. Because there have been progress related to each of the goals, as well as outcome measures added, the structure of the five-year plan has been revised. This slide is a snapshot of the document itself indicating where the measures and progress towards each goal have been added in the document since the last time we met. The board will be provided with a link to the working copy of the five-year plan that outlines the new progress and outcome columns. As progress continues to be made, updated links will be shared with the board. While there has been progress made this year in all six of the goal areas identified in the plan, this evening's presentation will focus on the progress and outcomes of the areas denoted in red, as these areas closely align to increasing academic outcomes for our students. Throughout the presentation, you will notice references to professional learning opportunities in the other two areas other than professional learning. This is because much of the work that needs to be accomplished in the five-year plan requires professional learning in order for objectives to be implemented. However, I will also highlight professional learning in a more specific context as the plan's goal area. Let's start by looking at the progress in the five-year plan in instructional opportunities. The stated goal for this area is to include instructional opportunities reflective of the unique needs of students with disabilities. The next several slides, I'm sorry, will review progress made in these areas. Since we last met, OPEC has worked to secure and continue grants that help Virginia Beach City Public Schools provide multiple pathways for our high school students. These partnerships focus on strengthening workplace readiness skills for high school students with disabilities. Listed on this slide are the partnerships that we have purchased this year to secure grants. At the elementary level, OPEC staff, in collaboration with elementary specialists and coordinators, have worked extensively to develop a guidance document for elementary teachers, which will increase instructional opportunities for students who are struggling readers as those diagnosed with having dyslexia. The guidance document provides information on how to identify, assess, instruct, and monitor students to ensure their needs are met. The guidance document is currently being used as a part of instructional material for a professional learning course that's in progress. A communication and delivery plan for the guidance document will be ready this summer to ensure that elementary teachers, reading specialists, and administrators have access to the document and understand how to use it. Next steps will include working with the secondary coordinators and instructional specialists to create a similar document for secondary teachers. In addition to the guidance documents, OPEC staff is working directly with school administrators and their staff to redefine what intentional and purposeful collaboration between special education and general education teachers in schools should look like and sound like. On this slide, you will see special education and general education teachers at North Landing Elementary School collaborating to analyze data for their students with disabilities. The picture on the left illustrates specially-designed instruction put into place as a result of that data. Purposeful collaboration is yielding positive results in schools like North Landing. In fact, Principal Jo Parker reports that by bringing together a team of professionals, including the PCST, the Program Compliance Support Teacher, the General Education Teacher, the Special Education Teacher, the Reading Specialist, and OPEC Specialist to examine the needs of students with disabilities in her school, data revealed the need for a prescriptive multisensory instruction for a specific student. This team was able to develop an instructional plan that specifically met the needs of this particular student. At this time, I would like for the wonderful Principal of North Landing to come up and tell you in her own words how this was accomplished.
Good afternoon, members of the school board. Dr. Spence? Thank you for the opportunity to come before you today to share some exciting news about student growth happening at North Landing Elementary School. We've been using data to target students who are not progressing at the expected rate as outlined in our Plan for Continuous Improvement, otherwise known as our PCI. Through this data exploration, we discovered one student who was not making adequate progress. We scheduled a meeting with our reading specialist, instructional specialist, general education teacher, and case manager to program differently for this one particular student. We also included our PCST, our Program Compliance Support Teacher, as her role has changed to assist with instruction, coaching, and also compliance matters. This student received quality education through the core curriculum, but she was not responding to this instruction. So we designed a prescriptive multisensory instructional plan to meet this child's particular needs. We are thrilled to report that this student is confidently reading and writing and growing in leaps and bounds daily. The instructors in this collaboration are also growing. They each benefit from each other's strengths. And if I may, just take a brief moment to introduce this fabulous team. Ms. Donnette Fuller, our Program Compliance Specialist; Susan Hale, General Education Teacher; Marissa East, Special Education Teacher; Rayjean Bernostren, our Reading Specialist; and Lisa Myers, our Instructional Specialist. Thank you. Thank you, and thank you to the team.
Students' instructional opportunities are not just enhanced by the educators and specialists who surround them, but also by the use of technology and assistive technology to support their education. We are proud that our division has chosen as a priority to invest in some of the most advanced technology for our students with disabilities, especially those with visual impairments, in order to provide access to the same programs as the general education peers, for example, Google Classroom. One of the most productive devices for these students is the Braille Note Touch. Due to the volume of print materials required at the secondary level, this tool becomes a necessity for the academic student to be successful. Specialized technology enables our staff who work with visual impairments to transcribe assignments from the print medium to the Braille format quickly and efficiently in order for our students to keep up with the pace of instruction. By providing the visual impairment staff, support staff with access to a Braille embosser and the required hardware and software, students are able to access the curriculum. Because of the advanced technology and highly-trained staff the division has available, students like Naomi, the young lady in the top left, are empowered to complete academic studies as well as follow their musical passion. The transcription of standard music into Braille format requires training in classical music and an expertise in technology designed for this purpose. I might note that if you attended Little Feet Meet last year, Naomi had the pleasure of singing the National Anthem at Little Feet Meet. But at this time, Naomi will share with you in her own words how she uses the Braille Note Touch and how it has increased her academic independence and access to the world around her. Now, she asked that we prepare questions for her, so she could prepare her answers with the Braille Note, because as her teachers will tell you, she's quite the perfectionist.
Now, is the Braille Note Touch compared to the use of the Perkins Corel? First of all, I am as much clever and better. I will demonstrate my Braille Note Touch. Now, I will demonstrate my Braille Note Touch. Second, the Braille Note... The Braille Note Touch not only lets me write and read text in Braille, it is also an Android tablet. I can use it to log on to the Internet and download apps from the Play Store. There is a book reader that I can download books to, as well as a calculator. It has a Braille display, so that I can read.
Fantastic. How has the Braille Note Touch increased your independence in school?
I use my Braille Note Touch to read, complete assignments, and turn in work on Google Classroom by myself. I can log on and read Internet sites. I can type assignments in Braille, download it to a flash drive, and put the flash drive in a computer to print it, so my teachers can read it. I am able to access documents in Google Drive that students have shared with me in my classes. My work does not have to be transcribed from Braille to print for my teachers as it would with the Braille...
What math classes have you completed in high school? And what functions of the Braille Note Touch have you used in these classes?
I have completed Algebra I, Geometry, and I am taking Algebra, Functions, Data Analysis now. I can type math problems in the Math Nemeth Braille code, which is different than Literary Braille, and then copy and paste them into a Word document that can be printed out for my teachers. I sometimes use the calculator on the Braille Note, but I usually use a separate talking calculator that is the same as the other students' calculators. My teacher of the vision impaired made my graphics for my geometry class, so I only use my Braille Note to solve equations.
Great. What plans do you have after graduation? In what ways has technology like the Braille Note Touch prepared you in regards to achieving your future goals?
I will be attending Tidewater Community College next year to get a degree in some field of technology. It would be cool to teach others who are blind to use these devices.
I want to applaud.
Wow.
I also wanted to add that Naomi, when I was told that she was going to be doing this, wanted to make sure that her nails were done.
That was beautiful.
Notice those nails.
My technology will go around with my three assistive technology folks in the audience. No pressure. Patience.
Do that test manager that you just had up last spring. Test manager. Or shut it down. You gotta choose it.
This one?
Yep.
All right.
And test it.
All right. There we go. Yes. That's right.
All right. As previously mentioned, students like Naomi have their instructional opportunities by the use of technology and assistive technology to support their education. Later this evening, at the regular school board meeting, you will see another phenomenal student whose education has been enhanced by assistive technology. The instructional opportunities that you have just seen are in place for students with disabilities because of the instructors and staff who work with them each and every day. In order to meet this meaningful and purposeful instruction for students with disabilities and make it consistent across our school division, professional learning is necessary and is the next area of the plan that I will highlight. The OPEC staff has continued to provide site-specific professional learning as building administrators assess the needs of their staff members. Listed on the slide are topics that have been covered this school year. Teachers have reported that they really enjoy site-specific professional learning that address their particular professional growth needs. This school year, there has been a deliberate collaboration between content coordinators and specialists, and OPEC coordinators and specialists, to design professional learning using an integrated approach that addresses instruction from both the general education and special education lens, with a specific focus on lesson plan design. The teachers were asked to bring lesson plans to reflect on how they could modify their plans to address the specific disability-related needs of students with disabilities. In addition to site-specific professional learning, a new teacher cohort was established by OPEC instructional specialists to provide support to teachers. The topics were generated by the teachers to meet their individual needs. I'd like to share on this slide a comment from a teacher at Kimsville Meadows Elementary School. Because we realize that we have varying levels of knowledge in our school division and expertise in working with students with disabilities, we are continuing to provide resources that are not bound by face-to-face interaction and time. You may recall that we shared with you the inclusive practices and specially-designed instruction online modules that were developed last school year and continue to be quite popular with staff members when they need on-demand professional learning. This year, we launched additional modules. They were a part of our special education mandatory training for teachers. Accessing these modules were a part of ongoing training. Many of our administrators, I might add, have used the specific modules for site-based professional learning as they have analyzed the needs in their buildings. This past school year, we have continued to work with PGI to provide focus and intentional professional learning experiences for aspiring administrators through the AP Pathway, through mandatory professional learning for assistant principals overseeing special education, and citywide principals, meetings, and assistant principal professional learning. As I round off the progress in this area of professional learning, I would like to highlight the renewed partnership with Old Dominion University to provide teacher assistants who currently have a bachelor's degree in any field of study, an opportunity to earn a degree in special education. Virginia Beach City Public Schools has made a commitment to invest in this endeavor to assist us in enrolling our own special education teachers. As you are aware, the field of special education has been identified as hard to stop by the Virginia Department of Education. At the end of the last school year, we advertised through a Principal Packet Memo for teacher assistants who currently have a bachelor's degree in any field to attend an interest meeting. They were given information about the program and an application. We currently have 13 teacher assistants participating in this licensure program. The final area I would like to share progress with is parental and community involvement. Currently, the Parent Support and Information Teacher distributes a newsletter that provides resources and good news about special education programming to parents and staff. Virginia Beach City Public Schools is entered into a regional grant that has been recently approved to acquire additional resource materials that will be distributed at initial eligibility meetings. The materials will include a notebook of resources for our parents to assist them in navigating the special education process. It will also include sections for parents to keep their IEPs, eligibility reports, and any other important information. Our SEAC members will be assisting us in making sure that we have this notebook completed. We have also been awarded a $2,000 mini-grant from VCU and the Virginia Department of Education to facilitate an inclusion project at First Colonial High School led by students in the Legal Studies Academy. The Inclusion Project is led by a dedicated group of youth leaders with disabilities throughout the state who are concerned about what they perceive as a lack of general awareness of disabilities. This group was actually the group that enacted the Disability Awareness Month in February 2009, in the General Assembly. As a result of collaboration between OPEC, Office of Student Support Services, Media and Communications, there is a military-connected website that has been updated to point military families to resources. Also, for the past three years, we have served over 600 students in the TEST grant that was secured in partnership with ODU. TEST stands for Teaching Exceptional Students Together. The main objective of the grant is to improve social and emotional well-being of military-connected students who receive special education services. These students have benefited from academic tutoring, as well as activities developed to cultivate positive and social and emotional growth. The instructional specialists who manage this grant have also participated in many events that have been hosted by our military community. In an effort to solicit parent feedback in the IEP process, SEAC members and OPEC have collaborated to create a post-meeting feedback questionnaire for parents. Some of the questions will include, "I was given sufficient notice so I could prepare for a meeting," and, "Were educational terms explained to me as needed?" We look forward to launching this questionnaire during the next school year to continue to improve our parent involvement in our IEP process. Also, in an effort to continue growth and progress, to keep our board informed, SEAC will be providing an annual report to the board in the month of June. Again, this year, we will host the Little Feet Meet in collaboration with Special Olympics. This annual event will take place on March 27th at Tallwood High School from 9:30 to 12 o'clock. Held in partnership with Special Olympics, this event provides an opportunity for young students with developmental delays to participate in developmentally corporate races, throwing events, and jumping events, in the assistance from a general education peer. The goal is to further promote inclusion and acceptance in school communities while encouraging physical fitness. Preparation for these athletes is done under the supervision of our school staff, our adaptive physical education teachers, who also attend the Little Feet Meet. This slide captures students from Glenwood Elementary preparing for the event. Our special education teachers and specialists make a huge impact, as you know, in the lives of our students. You can see that from your many visits in the classrooms. You can see the strong relationships between the teachers and the staff. In fact, several parents have nominated special education teachers for recognition through our division's Great Dreams Need Great Teachers campaign. I won't read you the post, but please know that Mrs. Kimberly Vostek Spencer, a teacher at C-TAC, was recognized for giving a student a nuisance of pride as he transitioned from Georgia to Virginia. A parent commented about Stacy Nichols and her willingness to go above and beyond to ensure that her daughter has successful transition to middle school. And Susan Hale was notified parent for her excellent communication skills. You can read the testimonials on the Great Dreams website of VB schools dot com and see them on social media as well. In tonight's workshop, I provided you with a lot of information. I provided you with update and progress in the areas of the five-year plan. I look forward to bringing you updates in the other areas of the five-year plan in the future. Before I open it up for questions, I'd like to recognize David Decand, Erin Turkinter, and Gail Culversen from our Assistive Technology Department, and also Tanya Sotomayor, our Director for Compliance in Special Education. At this time, I would open it up for any questions that you may have. If they're related to assistive technology, I can have one of our team members to come up with regards to that. Thank you.
Ms. Gatlin, I'd like to say thank you for this in-depth presentation. I am very impressed with Naomi and what she's doing. The Braille that she's using, will that follow her to TCC? And how does she access it at home in getting her work done?
You can come up to me. Come up here. Hi, I'm Gail Culversen. I work with Naomi indirectly through assistive technology. She has that Braille Note Touch available to her to take home, to do her homework. As far as it being available to her to go to TCC, that's an IEP team decision and a school division decision, so, you know, it's available, but we all have to make that decision as a team.
I mean, are you partnering with TCC to make sure that she get that transitional... Is that still an IEP?
Naomi is very proficient at using her Braille Note Touch. If anything, you know, if they call us and they need update of training, we would be happy to go out and do that. But Naomi, she has a grasp of that technology.
My second question. You mentioned the question... My second question, you mentioned the questionnaire for the parents to fill out as they go through the process. Is, will this questionnaire be online only or will it be paper as well?
Those are some of the logistics we're still working out.
All right, but you're keeping in mind about the accessibility to online and taking it out for the parents? Thank you.
Any others, Ms. Manning?
Well, first, thank you to all the special education folks who are here. We really appreciate you guys coming and all that you do for students. And thank you, Dr. Gatlin, for the presentation. I'm so pleased to hear about the period questionnaire. Thank you for doing that. So, when will they receive the questionnaires? After every IEP meeting or held up?
Those are still some of the logistics that we're working out because it's not just necessarily, they didn't just want to look at IEP meetings. They wanted to look at other special education related meetings as well.
Great. And you anticipate that taking, that starting next school year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Gatlin. It's good today as it was yesterday. I was at SEAC yesterday. So, a couple of questions for, well, I don't know, maybe Assistant Technology. But I know yesterday that I think Carol was talking about twelve of the folks had trained and studied together for four years, the Assistant Technology folks. What was, what was that?
Oh, about, Mr. DeCant, would you like to speak to that? Mrs. Koseka was talking about the extensive training that you all took.
Yeah, we, we studied for four years to get nationally certified. So, we're ATP from RESNA, Rehabilitation Engineering Association, is the convening authority for Assistant Technology professionals. And we went through the exam and got nationally certified. We're probably the only school system in Virginia that has twelve. Even Fairfax doesn't have twelve.
So, is this, will this continue to be available to people who want to do that? Just like our board-certified teachers that want to step up and do that? All right, well, congratulations because I know Carol was very proud of that and said y'all had worked together for four years. That's excellent. And then, Dr. Gatlin, the program through Old Dominion, and I guess that's CJ Butler. Is that right? Okay, CJ Butler. Now, how, so you've got thirteen, so how many classes do they need to take to be able to, the TAs, to be able to get this license? How long does it take them? And we pay for it, correct?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Okay, so my first part is, how long does it take them to get this? And then, how many of them, because this has been going on for a while? How many of them actually turned into special education teachers?
We've had seven teachers, seven teacher assistants who've turned into teachers. We restarted the program. This particular, this school year was the thirteen. And also, it varies. You know, CJ looks at their transcripts. So, it could range from about thirteen classes that they have to take. But CJ looks at what they've taken before based on what their bachelor's degree has been in.
And that's a full, that's not provisional license, that's a full license?
That's a full, yes, not provisional.
Okay, thank you. That's all right. Sounds great. Thank you.
I was very impressed with, with the professional development that we're doing with our teachers and very impressed with the fact that, you know, one of the teachers even said she felt like this was an opportunity for her to converse with her colleagues and not feel like she's swimming in a big ocean all by herself. But that was very impressive. And, you know, and this is, this is, this is exactly the type of training that teachers need. Something that is spearheaded directly for what, what, what they're, what they're certified in. So, I thought that was really good that you're doing that, and I appreciate that. I think this is an example of when we provide it, they will come.
Ms. Manning?
To follow up on what Ms. Williams asked regarding the TAs, do they owe us a certain number of years of employment once we've paid for their degree in special education?
I'm not sure. I have to check on that. I'm not positive.
Mr. Mayor?
It's if you, if we're providing them the funding for the specialized class. I'm not aware of that, if we're holding them accountable to the, where they have to spend so many years.
That's definitely something I can research.
I think, yeah, that's important. We want to keep them. We don't want to just train them and send them somewhere else. Ms. Fry?
So, yeah, I just want to comment, when you have a five-year plan, it's so easy to get ahead of ourselves. And, you know, some of us are more patient than others. But just to see this progress in such a short amount of time, and it is so aligned. And two things stand out to me in particular, the struggling readers and the purposeful collaboration between the general ed and special ed teachers. And it really is a foundation for what's to follow with the rest of this plan, for me.
Any others, Ms. Williams?
Refresh my memory, how is information given to parents to let them know of all the resources? I know Ms. Blackwell, Carol is down there at the Parent Support Center. But is there anything in the first packet that goes home to school that very first week? Just kind of a one-page or saying, "This is special ed. This is, you know, our resource center." Is there anything like that, or do we just wait till a child is referred?
Well, we have a couple of ways. We do have information that does go home. But we also have information now, especially with the, goodness gracious, it escapes me. Dr. Bannick, he's the academic planner. Destination graduation. I'm sorry, I forget, the name escaped me. In terms of for each particular grade level to link from there. But the resource that you heard me spoke about with regards to the collaboration will help us to gain additional information that we can provide to parents to have available, not just for meetings, but to let them know what they can do to assist their students.
Okay, so, so you did say we had stuff available that goes home. Does it go home in that packet in the first week?
I'm not sure if it goes home during the first week of school, but it does go home, not during the first week of school.
To everybody, not just special, not just children that are already in school?
Well, we always send information home regarding things, ways that you can help your child. With regards to the newsletter that Mrs. Blackwell sends home, because we are not able to just do a query of students with disabilities, that becomes a, a newsletter that has to be subscribed to similarly to our core an apple a day. So, Mrs. Blackwell can't simply just send that particular newsletter to students or parents with IEPs.
Because I think that, you know, and it's been a while since I've been through this with my own son. But I think that parents don't have a clue of even where to begin. So, my question is, do they just wait till the teacher calls them up or meets with them and says, "I think that we need to discuss something," or do they have any place where they can start asking questions? And do they even know about, like, Ms. Blackwell's Parent Support Center? I guess that's my question. Do you not know about any of this until you're actually there in the process?
And that's something that we can continue to explore. And we probably could add that as a part of our questionnaire for parents to ask them.
Yeah, I would appreciate that because once you're in it, you know, after you have the shock of, you know, then, okay, now I've got this child with special, you know, learning differences, and then how do I navigate the whole thing? It might be nice to have some, you know, information to put in your back pocket. Thank you.
So, what is the date of the Little Feet event again?
The twenty-seventh of March.
Of March, okay. Ms. McLeod?
I, I, just because of Mrs. Williams' questions, I lean as, Ms. Cox, is there a way, is when, for the, to subscribe to all of these things? Is that something that they can go right on to the website and look at all the resources and the things they can subscribe to and do it right there?
So, we do have a section on our website that has information about the Information Support Center and some of the special education resources that are available even prior to that contact with the parent. We also have the ability, and it's something that we've talked about in our office very recently, about through our new digital newsletter showcasing some of the information and stories so that, that people have a greater understanding of the depth and breadth of services that we provide and where they can get information about them.
And that's fantastic. And it's assuming then that the parents have actually read them and that, but at least we know that they're out there, and that's what's most important.
Good, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's the evening to the updates for the... Pass and share.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Yes, folders. Muted colors today versus the bright ones.
This looks like Game Pop Garnet.
There, Mr. Keever. I think it's Game Pop Garnet.
Oh, I don't know.
I think so.
I think it's Stingray Burgundy to go along with the gray.
We ran out. Oh, no, we got one. Got two coming.
Tell me this one was mine, so I can give it.
That's all right. I wanted a Burgundy folder anyway.
I was in Richmond this morning and worked my way back to a variety of...
I'll be right with you.
Ready?
I'm ready. We're ready.
Excellent. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, school board members. Today's our pleasure to update the school board on the recently completed class rank survey and determine next steps with the project. As the presentation begins, I would like to again acknowledge the presence of our high school principals in the room this afternoon. Mr. Harris, Mr. Miller, Dr. Avila, Dr. Smith, and Dr. LeBlanc behind me as well. I think I covered them all, several intended to be here and may join us as we go. As I mentioned in January in the presentation then, the dialogue on class rank is one to group tanks seriously, and their attendance today is an outward sign of their collective belief in and support for where we are headed at the school division. Joining me in presenting this afternoon with the survey data will be Dr. Daniel Smith, Principal of Kellum High School and former assistant, excuse me, and former principal at Princess Anne High School, and then Dr. Claire LeBlanc, Principal of Ocean Lake High School. Our discussion today will focus on the class rank survey results, and we will also share the policies and regulations that could potentially be impacted should the board green light us moving forward. In the folders that you received this afternoon, there were several items that I would just like to mention briefly. There's a copy of the PowerPoint presentation. There is a document with all survey results. There is a document with the survey results for high school parents. There's a document with survey results for middle school parents. There's a document that includes survey results for elementary school parents. We've also included in there a complete listing of all comments, and those were unredacted. Worth the read as you have some time. The survey instrument is also included, and we put back in that folder again a copy of the data that we shared with you with regard to GPAs from 2016, 2017. Let me just mention, as you are looking through those files, there are two pieces of data that we did not include and certainly can, should you wish to have them. There were five middle school students who took the survey. I'm happy to give you their data. We've reported out here. We can give you the individual response data as well as the twenty-five high school students that responded. We provided that information snapshot in the data review, but I did not copy those three pages. But if you're, if you'd like to have that, we can certainly provide it. As, as we move into the review, please note the timeline on the slide in front of you. As referenced during our January presentation, the forward momentum for this project started in earnest based on the school board direction last spring. Since the July retreat, administration has worked with high school principals to develop options for school board review and consideration in terms of moving away from class rank. This request is related to the repeated concerns brought forward with regard to the inequities around weighted course options in our high schools. During the last several months, the principals reviewed relevant research, examined the GPA data that we provided to you, had conversations with teams in their buildings, and also affirmed their unanimous belief that we should, as a division, move away from ranking students based solely on GPAs. Pending your favorable response to the survey data presented this evening, we intend to share draft policy revisions with the Policy Review Committee on Thursday afternoon with the intent of bringing forward revised policy language to the board for information and action during your April meetings. Please note that if approved, this shift would take place and take effect with the incoming ninth grade, the class of 2022. Students currently in high school would not be impacted by the move. Further, as you're likely aware, and as I shared in January, the class of 2022 will enter high school with a different set of graduation requirements. And as a result of this decision at the state level, we feel the timing is right for shifting how we honor students and their academic achievement. Recall that we shared a survey draft with the school board during our January workshop session. Based on feedback from board members, the survey was edited and a broader group of stakeholders were targeted. Initially, we planned to gather feedback from middle school parents and students as well as elementary school parents. As a result of the feedback, and to be even more inclusive, we shared the survey with high school parents and students as well. The survey was conducted through our E-Town Hall format, going live on Monday, January twenty-ninth, and remaining open through Friday, February ninth. There were four primary parts to the survey. Number one, to determine if stakeholders considered class rank an important part of the college admissions process. Number two, asked directly if there was support for policy change to the Latin Honor System for Academic Recognition. Number three, ask about support for the grade point average benchmarks as presented in the survey. And number four, determine agreement level with maintaining the practice of designating valedictorian and salutatorian based solely on class rank as determined by GPA. At this point, I will transition to Dr. LeBlanc, I believe, who will begin to take next week's data. Claire?
Good evening, members of the school board, Dr. Spence, and others in attendance tonight. I'm pleased to be a part of the presentation team this evening and represent my colleagues on this important topic. As Mr. Keever mentioned earlier, the high school principals have been engaged in dialogue around this topic for the last several months and fully support the concept of moving away from class rank. During the two-week survey window, 1,554 respondents participated, 1,524 parents, and thirty students. Parents had the opportunity to select multiple levels regarding their children in school. Therefore, the totals you see for elementary, middle, and high will not equal the number 1,524. Please also note that while only thirty students responded, five at the middle school level and twenty-five at the high school level, we felt it was important to honor their voice and input. As a result, you will see student response totals for each of the question prompts. With regard to participation rates for the survey, the 1,554 responses placed the rate above the number of responses received on the last round of school calendar inputs. To the first question item on the survey, almost all survey participants, who are parents, agreed strongly or agreed with the idea that weighted courses have the potential to impact the student's grade point average significantly. Interestingly, 100% of the students who participated agreed or strongly agreed. Regarding the idea of research indicating that class rank carried less importance in the college admissions process, the agreement levels were in the mid-sixties. The handover research study from January 2013 that was provided to the school board entitled Class Rank and GPA: Impact on College Admissions, as well as more recent literature, strongly suggests that many admissions officers do not consider rank a particularly useful indicator of academic ability or potential for post-secondary success. Due to the tremendous differences in curricula and grading standards at differing high schools, many admissions officers have begun to discount the accuracy and importance of class rank as a factor in evaluating students. The relative importance of rank, when considered alongside other factors such as... The relative importance of rank, when considered alongside other factors such as GPA, completion of rigorous courses, test scores, essay, participation in extracurricular activities and recommendations, has fallen by over 50% in the last 15 years. Many large state universities, however, still want applicants to report class rank to help sort through the high volume of applications received. Dr. Smith?
Good evening. My name is Daniel Smith, and I've had the pleasure of serving as principal of both Princess Anne High School and currently of Floyd E. Kellum High School. Just a quick note or two before I begin on the results of the survey. Over the past five years, I've been able to observe and work directly with students who have been consumed and obsessed by the pressures of class rank. I've observed its negative impact on their mental health and depression, along with other unintended outcomes. Just today, in a meeting with a small group of about 10 seniors, we were able to discuss the topic of class rank. Knowing I was coming here this evening, I asked for their thoughts. All 10 of them unanimously agreed that it had many negative impacts, and those negative impacts far outweighed any potential positive impacts for just a few. Now to the survey. 77% of parents who responded to the E-Town survey agreed or strongly agreed with the idea of supporting a policy change that would adopt Latin honors system of academic recognition. As you will note, the highest agreement levels are for elementary and middle school parents. High school parents had a slightly lower agreement level. Please note that 12 of the 25 high school students agreed or strongly agreed, while three of the five middle school students agreed or strongly agreed. Again, we are reporting the student responses to honor their voice on the survey. However, their participation numbers were low. This survey question focuses on the specific benchmarks within the Latin honors system. As a reminder, the proposed GPA benchmarks using the Latin honors system are as follows. Cumulative grade point averages between 3.0 and 3.49 would earn the designation as Honored Graduate. Grade point averages from 3.5 to 3.75 would earn the designation as cum laude, Latin for with honor. GPAs from 3.76 to 3.99 would be designated as magna cum laude, or with great honor. Those cumulative grade point averages at 4.0 or above would earn the Latin designation of the highest honor, summa cum laude, a designation that is achievable for all students across all high schools regardless of weighted credit. These benchmarks were developed collaboratively among the high school principals and represent our thinking on where the levels should be placed. The data chart the board received gave breakdowns by level for the classes of 2016 and 2017. In looking specifically at the GPA benchmarks within the Latin honors system, there was overall agreement of 77%, with higher reach of agreement for elementary parents at 79% and middle school parents at 80%. All five of the middle school participants supported the GPA benchmarks for the Latin honors system. The final question asked on the survey involved gathering agreement levels with the idea of continuing to name the valedictorian and salutatorian based solely on class ranks as determined by GPA. As with most of our other question items, there was over 70% agreement level with this thought. Frankly, this is an area in which the high school principals have struggled to reach consensus. There are several schools of thoughts regarding naming a valedictorian and salutatorian. That said, the data suggests support for maintaining the current practice of naming valedictorian and a salutatorian based on GPA. However, the principals would like to have further conversation about the concept of how these students are recognized for their achievement. For instance, current practice for valedictorian and salutatorian is to serve as speakers at graduation. This practice in particular is one that the high school principals would like to revisit with the incoming class of 2022 to seek their help in developing consensus of a recognition model across all Latin designations. This enhanced recognition model may or may not include a speaking role for the valedictorian and salutatorian at graduation. Captured on this slide, you'll find some of the emerging themes of the comments provided by survey respondents. Several important caveats to keep in mind. Of the 1,554 respondents, approximately 26% decided to offer comments. While we initially discussed having a word limit within the comments, that feature was not enabled on the survey, and the respondents were able to use well beyond the 50 words. In several comments, there appeared to be both support and opposition to the idea within a single entry. Each board member received a full and unredacted version of the comments in the folder containing resources for this workshop. With regard to the idea that 3.0 is too low of a designation to receive honors recognition, please note that a 3.0 has been the VBCPS honors benchmark for at least the last 30 years, and altering this level is not one recommended by the principals. Perhaps some survey respondents thought that this was a new proposed level under consideration based on how the data was presented for the proposed Latin designations.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. If, we can stop and do questions now, and then I can talk about the potential implications for policies and regulations, or we can, I can preview these items and then take questions at the end. What's your preference? Keep going?
Let's keep going.
Keep going, okay. So there are several policies and regulations that would potentially need to be revised should the board desire to move forward with this. Most notably, score policy 529, which is in regards to awards for achievement. And then school board policy 672, which deals with student evaluation and grading slash class rank. Those items would be revised in a way to suggest that with the incoming class of 2022, the new recognition system would be in place, and it would spell out what those recognition items are in terms of the GPA bands. There is, there would be some small edits to the regulation 526.2 and 525.3 with regard to eliminating the word class rank. So with that, I'm happy, we are happy to address.
Just questions.
Okay. Ms. Malnich?
Okay, so I heard from a parent, had a long, a long talk with a parent. Just to brief history, student 1490 SATs, Princess Anne IB student and governor's school student. 4.5 GPA, not in the top 10%. Is there a way over the next three years while we're implementing this that class rank could be voluntarily omitted from a transcript so that it doesn't show that a student like that is not in the top 10% of the class?
That's a great question.
Well, just as an option, I mean, just because this is, this is a student who is being punished for not being, in some sense. I mean, I look at it as the most amazing accomplishments ever. However, it kept this particular student from a few, a few opportunities because she was overlooked as not being in the top 10%. So, just that portion. It's a long time to wait, the three years, when we're just going to start it with, with the incoming freshman class, that the others can't benefit in some simple way along the way.
It would be something that we would need to look at, and frankly, we're not recommending that we do that until 2022 because we have a certain playing field that is in place now for our students and didn't necessarily want to shift that playing field. Though I will tell you that through the comments, there were a number of folks that responded that felt like we ought to do it in a more compressed fashion, that why, why would we wait to 2022? It could be something that we talk about in more detail, the idea of suspending the reporting of class rank for particular students. I'm not sure I would support that based on, based on the idea of that in some cases, we wouldn't know if a student wanted or didn't want a report unless we went out and said, hey, do you want us to report this? And right now, by policy and reg, we do report class rank.
Well, how about the opposite then, that they request that it not be reported?
I think we could take that into consideration.
That's just across the board.
Thank you.
I think, I think we would want to have some additional dialogue.
This student requested that it not be reported. Doesn't sound like she'd be under the, under the 10%, but it's real right now for a lot of kids.
Is it possible to move into the Latin system while still keeping the class rank for a while, for a couple of years, until we finally move into 100%, I mean, 100% doing that without class rank in 2022?
Rather than silently?
Yes, is it possible to do that?
Anything's possible.
It is, yeah, we would want to.
It's just a regulatory conversation based on some direction from the board, but anything is possible.
I, I just was wondering, because there's a lot of students out there that would really benefit from, from this. Even though we would still be reporting the class rank, I, I think that, I've always felt that a kid who gets 4.0 needs to be recognized in some way more than, than what we do because, just because they have somebody in their class who got a 4.10 or whatever.
Did you say 4.10?
Well, last year we had some that were 5. something, so. You know, so I just, I feel like the kid who, who does a 4.0 needs to, needs to have a higher recognition than what we give all of our students. So that's just my personal feeling, so. Ms. Weems?
Okay. You know, coming into this, I don't really have a strong preference either way. I am disappointed that we got only 1,500 parents to respond. How many parents do we have? 100, over 100,000 probably? Oh, well, just high school. How many parents do we have in high school?
No, this was all pre-grades.
This one's everybody.
Oh, so this one's everybody, so.
Elementary, middle, and high.
So.
That's why all the surveys are, though.
But again, it's roughly, it's the same we got for grading, it's the same we got for.
10% is tipping. As a communications person, I'm telling you, it's tipping.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah.
Yes.
But we're setting up a lot of start times.
Yes. Yeah. Okay. Well, my, um, my question is, it seems conflicting in some of the, the things that I've read, and then Dr. LeBlanc said something, and then the questions kind of ask it. The question says, you know, many schools now are not taking class rank. But then it says here, most large state universities are. So, are they or are they not? And what constitutes a large university? I'm thinking UVA does still take class rank, if I'm not mistaken. I'm thinking Virginia Tech is large. I'm thinking Liberty University is large. I mean, so, it, do they or do they not? I'm getting conflicting.
They do take class rank. The importance with which they place on class rank is
Well, up to the university.
is up to the university.
Right.
And so the, the idea that class rank is at the same level as GPA or courses that you took or standardized tests, it's not. So, class rank becomes tier five, tier six, tier seven in terms of looking at two, three, four, five, 100 different students. Additionally, we are, we are told that students are often reranked when they apply because it levels the playing field in terms of reviewing it at the college admissions level. So, our rank of one may be different than, we used the term Fairfax earlier, Fairfax rank of one, which may be different than Prince William's rank of one. So there is an additional ranking system that schools apply.
Okay. And they'll redo the GPA too. Jane U. redoes it because for core classes.
Right, right.
You know, they, so I mean, they.
That's correct, because everybody has different weighting systems and, you know, they're not just getting students from Virginia either. I mean, they're getting applications from all over the country, so they're just throwing out everybody's ranking system, and they do their own rankings. They have their own weighting system, and they give their own calculation of GPA.
Well, I, I always, and, and I did tons of research on this a few years ago when we were going over the grades. I mean, I called, I don't even know how many, but they still, it was my understanding, and I kind, I kind of think it says here that large universities, because of the amount of applications they get, they do use that as a weeding out.
That's right. I mean, in the research and everything that I read, I was just being fair to those universities that still do put some importance on class rank, and it's typically the very large universities because they have such a huge number of people who are applying, so it helps them very quickly weed through at least some of those applications, certainly not all.
Right, right. So I just want to make sure we're not, you know, hurting folks to, now, was this survey given to teachers too, or only teachers that had children?
It was given to parents and students, as the direction that we got from the board when we came forward with the survey. Did not say specifically send a teacher's name.
So, high school teacher, if you had a child that's in the system?
Right.
Okay. And then, um, so this is a lot, and so you said we have to give you direction basically by Thursday, what, what was it, by Thursday or what, by Thursday?
Well, Policy Review Committee meeting is on Thursday.
Because this is a lot, you know, here. And then my last question is, I know this came up from a couple Princess Anne folks, and it's come up a lot. So can you refresh my memory while we can't just separate IB and do IB ranking and Princess Anne ranking and Ocean Lakes Math and Science Academy and Ocean Lakes?
I can speak for Ocean Lakes. We work really hard to be Ocean Lakes High School. We're very proud of our academy, our academy students. I know they work incredibly hard, but we are Ocean Lakes High School. And so with conversations that we've had in and around our school, if you were to have a GPA for the academy kids and a GPA for the students who are zone there, it would further separate the two programs, and we just didn't want to do that. Do you understand, do you understand where I'm coming from?
I mean, they know who's, I mean, I can speak from a little experience from Princess Anne. They, they know who's in the IB program. They know who's officers of classes and where those people come from, and they know. And that is because the students have told you that, that they felt like they would be separated or the students fall out as well. Yeah, I mean, I.
Those are the conversations that we've had with the kids and with the adults in our building. And not everybody agrees, but there does seem to be a majority of people who say they would not want to do that. They don't want to separate out any further than it's already separated out the academy from Dan's own students or his own students.
And further, I mean, frankly, if you were to run just a GPA list of IB students and compared them to one another, do you want to, I mean, technically, even with a 4.0, would you want to be ranked 103rd out of 104?
I can relate to those who have GPAs.
But that was.
Nor can my children, and so I can't even, you know.
Right, but that was one of the issues was if you separated out the academy students, now what Dan was pointing to is that a student who would have been in the top 5% of his class is now at the very bottom of his ranking if he's reporting that rank separately from the other students.
I just know, I, I don't think that I've heard this from like, you know, Baystate High School or Kimsville, you know, we've heard it from.
We did hear it last year from some of our students.
Or, I mean, with, with academies or with the more advanced, or like Salem, I haven't really heard it, you know, I haven't heard it from high schools.
Actually Salem works the opposite because the Salem students don't have access to AP classes because of the elective class, as many AP because of the elective classes that they have to take in the Performing Arts Academy.
Right.
So those students are less likely to be ranked high than their non-academy peers.
Yeah, yeah.
So it, it actually flips on its head at Salem. It's one of the few academy models that actually flips on its head.
Yeah, because of Tom, yeah.
And then I think that as the high school principals have dialogue about this, we didn't see it as a, as a Princess Anne issue or an Ocean Lakes issue. We saw it as a collective way for us to say that ranking students based solely on GPA is not what we believe.
Okay.
And when, when tasked with looking at that more closely by the board, we came to, we came to consensus that that's not something that we feel like we should do anymore.
Okay, like I said, you know, I, I have no preference, and I still really don't. I'm gonna look at all this stuff and, you know, I just want to make sure we ask all the questions before we do something.
Mr. Edwards?
Um, the one number we haven't talked, I'm sure it's in the folder here, but I, I, for the public. 60% of the high schools across the country do not do class rank? Is that?
I, I think it was in the mid-upper 50s, 55, 56 is in my, in my brain somewhere.
But, and it's a growing, and it's a growing number as we, as, over the last decade.
Yes, sir.
And, yeah, I just wanted to point that out, that this is not some harebrained, like, what the heck is Virginia Beach doing now? I mean, I think we're looking at trend. They looked at that because of the issues that came up here, and then we asked them to do it. In fact, I think I last spring said, well, let's look at, throw it out, because I think we, the initial task was solve the academy issue.
Right.
But, um, the, I just wanted, the variable optional issue, we need to always put ourselves in the position of the consumer of the transcript. And if college X hits a transcript and one student with class rank from Virginia Beach and another student from Virginia Beach without it, it's going to be, oh, really? You know, I, I, I think we, we need to be careful on that. I mean, you know, that, that would probably hurt the student that opted out as much as it might have helped, so.
Mrs. Rye?
Okay, um, the issue of the larger universities, I'm not, it's just a comment that I'm, I'm trying to, in my own mind, think it's not our job to make things easier for Virginia Tech. So typically, when you remove one variable, the other variables just will, will count more. You know, if you have five variables, they each count 20%. You know, if you have five variables, they each count twenty percent. If you suddenly now have four variables, they count twenty-five percent. And it is my understanding we can still give bands, that we can provide bands of of where the rank falls within the class context. Cause colleges always say that's what they want to know, how are you doing within the context of your school? Um the other is a question, and I probably should have asked it previously, but asking about a valedictorian and a salutatorian. I'm not sure who I'm directing this to, but I think it's pretty unusual for schools who've done away with rankings to still keep the valedictorian. It seems to be working at cross purposes, but.
We would agree with you. And honestly, we would be okay if valedictorian and salutatorian was no longer a part of our policy and regulation in terms of designating that based on GPA. However, we did feel like we needed to ask that question because we had heard some inquiry as to whether or not we should continue to do that, so. The, I, on behalf of the high school principals, I would tell you that we are okay, we would be okay with the valedictorian and salutatorian designations no longer being a part of our policy rank.
Mrs. Melnick?
So um because someone asked, teachers do have an opinion, and I hear about them all the time, and I have one in a text message. Um but teachers are very concerned about kids taking manageable loads and kids taking AP classes just. Because it's a weighted class. This person said. The answer is to wait classes only if a student passes the AP exam. That was a suggestion and that uh. Certainly means you're, oh. I.
We have not talked about that, we probably just have an opinion on it, but I.
And this, what is, what is pass.
But it was just, you know, teachers do, teachers do have an opinion about this.
Exactly, five or four or three.
Sure.
And um they are very concerned about these these kids and and the loads that they carry and their mental health and um.
Yeah.
As as been, as was stated, the wicked competition that consumes so many of these kids at such a young age.
And I would just add, you know, uh in my conversation with some kids again today when I was talking about it, there were some that said that they felt. They, they're from parents or from others that they had to take an AP course, even though if they were really interested in, you know, a construction class or a culinary class. They felt pressured because class rank was kind of really pushed, so they really felt like that was, they had to take this AP class even if they really weren't interested in it, so.
That's tough, yep. So it's my understanding that even if we um officially do away with class rank, we would still have it somewhere because. For example, I think someone said before that uh the military, um institutions.
If they want a percentile band.
They want that, and so we would have to still have it so it would be available if any college requested it, correct?
We would be able to report it if needed.
Right, okay.
It would no longer be on our transcript and we wouldn't share with students in late June, year first and year second and year third.
Okay, right, Mrs. Manning?
Um, okay, bear with me, I have a few questions.
Sure.
Okay, so first of all, I like the idea of the Latin honor system, I just have some tweaks that I'd like us to just to consider. Um first question, though, is I noticed that from the time I received as a parent, the survey. And I probably looked at it a couple days after I got it, and to this, the wording is different.
Oh, I hope not. What I, what I gave you was what I hope is the wording.
Well, the initial. Well, the initial one that I got had some wording that I didn't care for, so that's why I remembered it and I even sent an email to Mr. McDonald and Ms. Anderson. It said VB CPS plans to recognize the following designations based on the student's cumulative GPA when graduating from high school. And I remembered it because I felt like it was leading, like it was, this is what we're doing, now please take our survey, but that's not in this one now, and I know it was when I took the survey.
Well, then I gave you the wrong one.
This is the one that's currently on the website.
Well.
So I'm just wondering when that was changed, so obviously some people took it with the, took the survey with.
No, ma'am, the the wording, the wording was the wording beginning Monday, the twenty-ninth, and ran through February ninth. So if the handout that I gave you is not what we uploaded.
Mr. McDonald, do you remember the wording? Cause we had this discussion.
We did, and an update was sent to us prior to going out. I would have to find the email to compare it.
Oh, I didn't get an update.
This is, this, what you have here is the actual survey results. And so you can see the language that was used for each question and the language that was used for each question is what you have on the sheet.
So the wording VB CPS plans to recognize the following designations based on student's cumulative GPA, when was that renewed? Cause that's not in the current one.
Prior to.
Here, split there.
Yeah.
So, okay. I'm sorry, I thought that what I received was very different than what went out and I'd had the conversation with other people, so anyway.
Well, I think this may, based on your feedback, we did make some revisions to the survey similarly.
Right, but it was after that, it was after that.
Oh, I've.
It was after that.
I don't, I don't believe so, I mean, it.
Okay, um so and then regarding the discussion with what the universities want. Um a parent who had sent us a great email in support of the Latin honor system called me yesterday and she'd actually just gotten off the phone with UVA admissions department. And she said that UVA did tell her they do consider class rank as part of their admissions process, so during our conversation, her concern was, hey, can we report both? And so I'm throwing that out there that, you know, perhaps we should either report both or give students the option of whether or not they want us to report both. So I'll throw that out there. Um and then, uh I'm sorry. Um also, I looked at what colleges do for their honors, since we're kind of trying to replicate what colleges do with the cum laude system. And ODU has approximately twenty-five percent of their graduates are honors graduates, cum laude and above. And ours are gonna be fifty-five percent of graduates are gonna be honor graduates. So that's something that was a common theme that you mentioned here that people were concerned about, so I would like the board to consider perhaps an adjustment to that. Um to the, to the numbers of of who is considered an honors graduate, cause right now fifty-five percent of all students will be honors graduates and above.
But then, if I can just clarify, right now, they already are honors graduates, so the.
That's all, so we could, we do three I and above, cause that's the honors society.
We do three I's above now, so if you are, if you've earned a three point oh, uh like some of us might have in nineteen ninety, you would consider an honor graduate.
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
At with a three point oh and above, so what, it might be misconception that we are lowering a band, but in fact, the three point oh is the honors designation, is the honors designation.
I was probably, less than that. But we also haven't always had five point oh, right?
No, that really frustrated in mid to late nineties.
Well, my kid, well, our kids are, they'll, can't get a five point oh.
Okay, so, but my point is, the community specifically said in in the surveys that that was a concern, so I think the board should consider that.
Right.
And then. Um I did have a teacher ask me and I forwarded that um request to Board Chair and Vice Chair about. Teachers actually getting the survey too, like Ms. Melnick said, it's really important for us to hear from the teachers and we haven't. So I never received a response on that request, so I don't know whatever happened with that. And I, and I also agree with Ms. Weems, this is a lot for us to digest right now, to say, okay, go ahead and send it to the Policy Committee to have them draw up some action items for us. I would really like to have some time for us to digest this and maybe have another workshop and then present it to the Policy Committee. I'm done.
Mrs. McLeod?
Thank you, um I don't believe in watering systems down, but I don't believe this does that. I believe that um when you, and not, I I know each high school does their graduation ceremonies a little different, but I always valued going to. When when they do say with honors or with what have you, and Mr. Miller and I were communicating back and forth here and it, there is a little bump uh that. You graduate with honors with a three point oh, but to get National Honor Society, it's three two, is that correct?
Three two five, maybe?
Yeah, three two five, so so the thing is, is there, that has a little extra push versus just, so there there is another way to pe- for people who are doing a little bit more than just a B average to to be ranked that way, so. My, regarding Policy Committee, I'm just going through my quick notes I wrote here, um I think, see no reason why the Policy Committee couldn't go ahead and come up with a verbiage. So that if we move forward, it's already ready, so there's no reason if we don't, I mean, I hate to waste the committee's time, but they can go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. McLeod, I was thinking the exact same thing, I appreciate that.
For sure. So um so the um the other thing is, is that if if we're already, to your your point about that, I don't, if we already are are graduating people with three point oh. I I think it's wonderful that we would have fifty percent of our, that means we're an excellent school system, we challenge kids and we encourage them and they're doing great. Um I don't think that's watering down the system and graduating too many of them um at a, at an honors or vote. Um the reporting vote, I'd actually say no, do do it or don't, either put the class rank on there or don't. I mean, for military academies, I feel that's a little bit different. Um and um I will give my input and thoughts regarding the valedictorian and salutatorian, um and you guys have all laughed at me and heard me say, you know. At the high school I went to, yes, that they did still acknowledge the valedictorian and salutatorian, but we um tried out to be the speaker. I did not have a three point oh, I was the speaker at my graduation, because there are kids out there, quite frankly. And every report card from kindergarten to sixth grade said, Ashley talks too much, well, by golly, I showed them and I spoke at my graduation, so it worked out for me very well. But I did not, I was a C student, I was a C student and I would have never been afforded that opportunity by this, but I. God is good and I'm a blessed speaker and I I know how to do that, and so I think the exciting part of you all coming up with how we do that is. There are some really amazing students you have out there in your class, and so this just provides that opportunity to go and and all respectfully. There's some really bad speeches by some of our valedictorians, salutatorians, they're not, they're not always great, so just academic, I mean, look, we have some really academically amazing people, but. If you don't know how to speak, you don't know how to speak, so um anyway, so there's, there's that, okay, so um and the IB thing, I I know this to be true. I mean, there are kids that are so cutthroat, so I mean, just having two recent graduates, I feel like I'm kind of, there are kids who take AP online classes. Don't tell anyone, especially the one person who has a point zero five over them at that time, that they're doing it just to edge them out. And well, I, we all do things to get up, to move up, but I don't know that that we need to encourage a, that kind of behavior. And so um that's, that's my, my final comment, you guys have done a great job putting this together and I just love the idea that um kids who currently aren't being. Giving, maybe given some recognition, might be getting it now with the system, thank you.
Ms. Dalton and and then Ms. Rye?
I just have to say that the report itself is good, I appreciate all your time that you're done with it and. Um one of the things that Ms. McLeod mentioned about the valedictorian and the salutatorian, talk with some of the principal and the students. They say that they have to elect the school president and they are, they are elected because that they know the school, they know the spirit of the school, they know the power and evolve. So why not let that particular person be the speaker or be the uh the person who will present the class because they are all, so. I to, I I had a lot more to say, but I'll just hold until the next time we come around, but uh I do like what's, what is being presented here. I work closely with the ODU Student Access Center, which bring in new students. And some of the questions that they've asked me or they pondered about, students that too do take AP classes and they rank high. They're finding that a lot of them still, when they go or come to ODU, they're having to test or retest again to be placed in the classes that are fitted for them. So it is a lot of give and take with what we are doing and saying. So I will go back and do another selective talk with the uh Director for Student Success uh Support and ask exactly how many get a percentage. Because they are concerned about that, that because the student are taking AP classes, they're ranking high, but when they get to this university, some of them are still having to test. To be placed in the specific classes they need to take.
Mrs. Rye?
Um they've all been good questions, I just need, I I'd like to clarify for uh the public that. If it's, if a college is provided with a class rank, yes, they're going to consider it, but if they're not provided with it and for twenty years, six. Up to sixty percent of their kids have been coming in without a class rank, they deal with it. And I I worked for years with William and Mary Admissions through the, an Alumni Admissions Network, and twenty years ago, I started asking this very question. You know, about how, how do you treat kids coming in without rank? And it started with the private schools twenty, thirty years ago, and then it was towns with small high schools like Mont, the one we came from. The year we moved here twenty years ago, the town we had just moved from in the northward east did away with class rank, a small public high school. And I think it's telling that for the most part, these schools that have done away with class rank have not re, have not done it a reversal. So if they felt their kids were being hurt by it, they would have reintroduced class rank, so that to me is is an important point to to keep in mind.
Right.
And if I could just maybe augment that comment a little bit, so I ha- I have a kid going through this whole process now of seeking out colleges and thinking about colleges. And we were talking at UVA to the admissions folks there and just cause I knew we were gonna have this conversation, I also asked them questions about UVA and class rank. And I got the same answer, which was, we do consider class rank, um and I said, well, where is it in your roster of things that are important? And they said it comes way after GPA, the classes that you've taken, the um how well you've done in those classes and then anything else you've done to be a well-rounded student. But we do use it to then sort of sift through that group. And then I asked the next question, which is what you're talking about, Ms. Rye, which is, well, what do you do if you don't have it? Because you know one, one of the largest systems in the state doesn't have it, and so um they said, well, we, we just go with the other criteria, primarily GPA is what we use to sift. And so I think that is important to introduce into that conversation, cause I know people get worried about this, but I'm just saying, I think most admissions offices now. Have to already wrestle with and contend with, what do you do if you don't get class rank?
It's just reasonable that the GPA shows their ac- their ability to uh excel academically.
Correct.
I mean, everybody's gonna have a bad teacher.
And SAT scores, they're gonna like, they're gonna look at GPA and SAT scores and they're gonna look at the correlation between those two things, so you know how, I mean, so. We could do an entire thing on admissions, but how those two things work, first, they want to see, does your GPA and your SAT score, are they in their ranges that they would expect to see those two things together? They're gonna stick you in one pile.
Yeah.
And then there's, if they see discrepancies, they're gonna stick you in another pile, and then if you go to a GPL, GPA below what they think is acceptable, they're gonna put you in another pile. So they're really doing some sorting and selecting on those criteria. I mean, UVA's number two, top two things are not class rank, they're frankly, first on their order is GPA and second is SAT scores, if you're gonna talk about a large state school. And if you ask them that, that's what they'll tell you, and then after that, they're looking at what courses did you take to get that GPA? And so there's, there's, it's, you know, I mean, I, so I I wanted to say that to try to allay some of those concerns. And I think at this summer's retreat, when we were talking about this, you heard Bobby Jameson talk about how he had called all the state schools to talk to them about class rank. And all of them have said it's pretty low on our, our list of things that are important.
Miss Holt?
Just a a comment, I've been um in support of our current valedictorians and salutorians. My first year on the board, I attended every single high school graduation, in fact, I got an award for it. And I try, I have tried to keep that up, however, I have heard the most, the level of the maturity that those uh students have shown. And demonstrated before the public, and I'm saying this because Ashley brought that up, um it's, it's just been totally amazing. In fact, I've actually taken notes on some of the things that the young people have said and what they aspire to. I have never heard what I would call a bad speech from e- from both of them, in fact, I've watched, uh I've gone back sometimes and watched on TV. And and I've listened to some of those speeches again, so I would like to, you know, give an applause to our valedictorians and salutorians because they're really excellent. Thank you.
All right, I see no other board members who are uh who have questions, so um I would thank you, I appreciate all the.
We need a little bit of next steps, before we wrap up, we do need a a little bit of next step here, so.
Good.
I think there were two issues that were raised um by a couple board members, and so I wanna get some direction. One was um this notion of needing to hear from teachers and then the next one was needing some time. Um I would um rel- relative to time, the the suggestion was then perhaps have another workshop. I'd say I'm not sure what we've accomplished in another workshop, but I don't mind time, if there's some time needed to digest, it's a conversation, I think, with the. Policy Review Committee about when, when the next time to come forward with that, and and then we have a question of, do you ask, need to hear from teachers?
Ms. Rigs, okay, uh I'm on the Policy Committee and if you need more time, we have uh four to six weeks to absorb it.
Okay, uh, I'm on the policy committee, and if you need more time, we have, uh, four to six weeks to absorb it. Because the P, the PRC doesn't, won't bring this policy changes to us for a vote until April tenth, or actually.
Information.
Information, April tenth, then the vote, April twenty-four. So you have a lot more time to look at it and absorb it and rethru it, and if you have questions, so, um, but I like the idea, like Ashley said. You know, let us as the policy committee go ahead, discuss it, make, you know, come up with what we feel, and then we also have that opportunity, we'll be ready. Because we have spent a lot of time on this, it's time to make this decision and let you guys move forward with it too.
Makes sense to me as well, um, Mrs. Manning.
Can I make a suggestion on that note, that we all just email maybe some bullet points that we'd like the Policy Review Committee to consider? And maybe proceed that way, maybe give us a week to be able to do that, could we do that?
Sure.
Two days. Two days.
No, we need in two days.
Go home and do it tonight.
Thank you.
Well, but we haven't even publicized the results to the public yet, and the public hasn't even seen the results.
Well, actually.
So I'd like to have an opportunity to have conversations with the public about the results.
Sure, a- actually.
And teachers and.
Well, the survey results are, have been and are available online, so when you.
Had, did you send out a message to people saying they were available?
Well, it's, it's open, I mean, the comments are open in the survey results.
But people are gonna remember, oh, I took that survey, let me go back and look at it.
Well, I've, I've actually had conversations with a couple of students who were interested in the data, so.
And well, but the general public, so I, that's just my, I would like to have more than two days since we just got all this information today.
Well, the thing is, is, is presented as information, it's presented as action, that's when additional changes can be made as well. But the Policy Review Committee is considering it. Well, they're gonna, they're gonna make, yes, so send your comments now, they can work on it, and then you can continue, you can, you can send additional comments later because. Send comments later, too. Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's not that you can't send comments after they actually meet on Thursday as well.
Mister Edwards.
Yeah, I was, I really like what, uh, Ms. Ricks suggested, and if necessary, I mean, I wouldn't object to another, it could be a short workshop, but if, when we bring it to, we normally try to avoid workshops and information. On the same item, uh, we used to do that a lot, we've been fortunately not done that, but, you know, if we, if we wanna do a front-end workshop and then haul it down that. Haul it down there for information the same night, you know, if it would provide, uh, better dialogue or double dialogue, um, this is a big enough issue, you know, it might be worth considering.
Ms. McLeod.
If we send this back to the teachers for input, what are we asking them?
Yeah, I, I didn't mean to bring that up to say that teachers should be involved, it was just, I have conversations with teachers all the time, and it was one I had last night with a friend. And she texted me this morning and said, I, I thought about it, but, you know, I don't think, based on her, she speaks for a lot of people too, that, um. It, the results would have been any different than, um, what the parents.
I, I got a message from a teacher who said that they would even be willing to come up with some questions, so I could reach out to them and ask if the board wants to do that.
What do we wanna hear from teachers?
Now, I was saying, in our.
Just their opinion?
Yeah, in our discussion, we, we felt like the people who were gonna be impacted by this were the students.
The students.
And the parents, which is why we directed the conversation to them, so we hadn't dialogued about it.
We have several principals here right now from high schools, and so am I wrong in assuming that you haven't discussed this with, or, am I right in assuming that you've discussed this with your teachers? This isn't just you, Mister Miller, coming in and telling us what your opinion is on this, you've actually gone and spoken to your staff as well.
This goes back pretty long way, the conversation, if you've been leading, you wanna talk a little bit of background on that, Danny?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
I can, I, I think that each of the principals would indicate that, that he or she has had conversations with members of their staff, with their instructional leadership teams. There, there are any number of ways to bring forward concerns about any number of topics, and I, I, I think that, I see heads nodding, I know that there have been conversations with different members of their instructional teams on this topic.
Those are topics of School Planning Council, we, we had the whole discussion around this to give them an opportunity and to let them know the survey was coming out, and so I asked the parents, and there's thirty-six members to our School Planning Council.
Oh, okay, which include parents and students and.
And they all had a voice in what their thoughts were, and students are also on that as well. So some of them might not have done the survey, but they certainly shared their opinions.
And the council has been with the instructional leadership team, and, and then they go back and meet with their department members, and then they come back, we, we've had two lengthy discussions, and there have been no objections to this whatsoever.
Right.
And we've had conversations with teachers too, I'll tell you, the, the folks that I find, they know probably most about and their impact on kids is our counselors.
Yeah.
So I've spoken with about every one of our counselors about it, and they're in strong support of it because they see the impact, the negative impact it has on our kids.
Ms. Melnick.
And this certainly isn't gonna diminish the, the students workload, I mean, the kids that wanna go to certain schools are still going to take six AP classes.
But they might take orchestra two.
But they might take orchestra two, which is great when we talk about steam.
An enjoy.
Thank you.
So I, I agree that, that the policy committee can move forward with input, uh, parents can, certainly can email us, we know that. In the past couple of months, we've had a lot of emails, and we, so for any parents out there listening, I encourage you to email us with any, anything that you would like the policy committee to come up with as well. You have input on this as well, and all of us can email policy committee members as well to, for input on this, and I think we need to move forward with this and let the policy committee work on it. Bring it back to us for information, and then we can decide from there if we need to make any further changes.
Okay, so that's what we're gonna do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dan.
Yes, sir, thank you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're gonna have to do the closed after our meeting, I'm so sorry. I, I wanna give it adequate time, sorry. So we are, we are, uh, temporary, we are in, uh, recess and we will meet on the dais.
At six.
At six o'clock.